It is five o'clock and it is Wednesday, the first of July. I'd like to call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. We have four petitions on our agenda today and just a couple of housekeeping items before we get started. Each petition will be read by the clerk and we'll ask the petitioner or representative to allow the board to question them and to give a little bit more detail about the reason for their request. We then have questions from the board and an opportunity for anyone who's sitting in from the public who would like to have questions, we have to limit that to five minutes or less. It must be questions or concerns on the petition only. We'll also ask if there's any correspondence and that can be read into the record. And at this time, we do have a majority of board members in attendance. It takes four votes to approve any variance request. It would be very helpful for the petitioner to make sure that they're trying to address the reasons why a variance request is necessary. That helps because as a board, we have to look at all of those areas in order to be able to vote on whether or not the variance request makes sense. So at this point, I am going to ask Jennifer Williams to read the first petition request.
Sorry, I was just admitting a few more folks here. The first petition is the petition of Edgardo Lopez, nine forty-three Newland Avenue, Upper Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero one, for use variance to operate a small cafe slash bakery in the former Kirby vacuum tenant space on the first floor of the building and an area variance to have a parking lot in the rear of the property with a three foot to five foot setback from the property lines at nine forty-three Newland Avenue on parcel three eight seven point one eight dash three dash two, being purchased under a land contract by Edgardo Lopez in an R two zone. Section three hundred dash zero three zero six, R two two family. A restaurant cafe is not a permitted use in the R two district. The first permitted district is the C two community shopping district. Section three hundred dash zero five zero two, design and layout standards. The required setbacks for a parking lot in the R two district is ten feet, proposed as three feet along the east and west property lines and five feet along the south property line.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would ask Mr. Lopez if you would like to talk a little bit more about your request. Just a reminder to our board members that there are actually two variance requests here. There's a use variance and an area variance. So we would need to be voting on both of those as part of this petition request. Mr. Lopez?
All right, um, the reason for my variance request is because I would like to operate, like it says here, a small cafe and bakery. I think it would be a great asset to the public in the community because it brings jobs. And plus, you know, I'm bringing and introducing a new culture, like culturally school, like Spanish food into the community. The space that I'm buying, it used to be an old Kirby, an old Kirby store before it was turned into a residential place before I bought it. So I was thinking, i- it's just a temporary measure. It's not something that I'm looking to stay here a long term. It's just to start. So I'm looking for something to start and since this is still, well, it's registered as a commercial, I figured that I could start small here. And if it starts expanding within time, I would move to an actual bigger location that I'm able to operate and have, you know, and expand and grow. So I'm just asking for the opportunity to be able to start a small cafe as a starting point here. And as far as the lot, the lot, um, I asked, I wanted to be able to throw gravel, like rocks back there so there could be a parking, a total of six parkings back there. I think you're able to fit back there and have like a total capacity in this commercial because the, the house itself is about fourteen, I'll say fourteen to eighteen hundred square feet. And you could fit up to fifty to a hundred people in here. So I'm just looking just for permission to be able to be able to bring, well, like I said, new jobs and a cafe to the area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lopez. At this time, members of the board are allowed to question the petitioner. So if you would be patient and answer the questions one by one as I call on the members of the board. Members, oh, anyone have questions for Mr. Lopez?
I do. This is Steve Sorg, Mr. Lopez. Thanks for being here. Questions, I guess, that I have, is it currently being used as a two unit, two family home?
Yes, um, currently is used as a two family home. I'll be occupying the upstairs as a residence and then the downstairs would be used if it gets approved as a cafe and bakery.
But as it sits today, it's being used as a two family today. You're generating income from the second floor apartment?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and is that under lease or is that a month to month tenancy?
It's a month to month tenancy, sir.
And you, are you occupying the first floor?
Right now, no, right now I'm doing renovations to the first floor.
Okay.
I use it as a office space.
I see. So you're presently using it as an office space and on the first floor. Are you using all of the first floor as an office space?
Nope, just a, just a corner of the, of the corner of the house is being used as an office space.
Okay, and how much of that first floor would be used as a cafe?
Around twelve hundred square feet of the home will be used as a cafe. I have a deck outside of the property as well. That's about, I'll say four hundred square feet that would also be included in the cafe because I would like people to sit out there and enjoy, you know, a meal out there.
Okay, so of the first floor, all of it will be used as a cafe?
Besides one quarter.
And the upstairs will be used as a, as an apartment and you'd occupy that apartment upstairs?
That is correct, sir.
Have you been in the restaurant cafe business before?
My grandma used to own a restaurant in Puerto Rico called Sazon de Abuelita and most of my experience comes from her. I've worked for her for a couple of years and during my career, growing up from sixteen now, I've worked in as a chef and I've worked in restaurants.
See, and what kind of a budget, how much do you expect that you're going to invest in, into this project?
Well, I'm looking to invest as a startup cost anywhere from, you know, payroll, from the materials that I gotta buy, from rearranging the inside, the interior of the house. I'm looking at around a project estimate of fifteen grand.
Fifteen thousand dollars, okay. Will you have a kitchen on the first floor?
The floor has a humongous kitchen already installed, which is going to be under renovations. It's going to have, it's going to be equipped to be able to have the cafe. It's going to have aluminum walls, industrial fans that you have to have that in order to get all the smokes and all that out of the property. So all that will be included in the estimates.
And there's a driveway apron on Newland Avenue and also a driveway apron on Sampson Street. Would your parking, all your egress and ingress all be from Sampson Street? Or would you use the Newland Avenue driveway at all?
No, it would be all entering from the Sampson way. The Newland driveway, I will be using that as just a personal space. So you'll just, they all will be parking in the Sampson driveway where you could fit up to six cars in the back driveway.
And you said the building can hold fifty to a hundred people?
Depending on the, how big I make it, the seats and stuff, it could probably hold up to a hundred people in here.
And you've had conversations with the county health department with regards to how you would design the interior and your kitchen and all the requirements that, that they require?
I have talked to, uh, Scalise about what the requirements would be. If you guys grant the variance, what, how many people I'll be able to have in here? How the kitchen needs to be set up, the restrooms and all that. He has, has went over it with me and showed me in a book, a book that he has.
And you, and you said that in your opening comments that you were going to buy the, buy the property. Am I misunderstood that you already acquired the property in October of twenty nineteen under a land contract?
That is correct.
You own the property?
Yes, yes.
And are any of those fifteen thousand dollars of in, in potential investment into it? Any going to the outside, if you remarked, any of those funds for the outside of the building?
The fifteen thousand does not include me put throwing gravel, not gravel, I would say rocks, I don't know how to say that, but the rocks out, outside. So I can make the parking, that does not include that, that's just coming out of personal budget.
And you're allowed in the, back, I know it's a hundred and twenty feet in depth. The vehicle that's on the property, I think it's a gray mid-sized car, an unlicensed car. Is that yours or is that on a neighbor's property?
No, that is on my property and that car would soon be moved out of there. That car, that car does belong to me and I, I, I put it there because it's out of the road. But that will no longer be there in the upcoming months.
So your line would be just on the other side of where that vehicle is now?
Just a little bit further down from the, from where that vehicle is.
Great, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you answering the questions.
You're welcome.
Other questions from members of the board?
Mr. Lopez, you mentioned about jobs that your business would, would be hiring or, about how many employees you suppose that you'll, you'll have eventually?
Well, to, to, to start, I'm looking to hiring at least, to, just to start and going over my, well, doing my business plan. I want to start with at least ten employees for now. And then if I do expand out of here, I'm hoping to turn it into more of a restaurant style where I'm able to hire at least fifty employees, sixty employees to actually operate. So right now I'm just starting small, I'm not thinking big. So with ten employees that I could hire for now to run the business will be great. And then in the near future, I could upgrade and move out of here into a bigger place and hire more employees. It just all depends on how the business is run and how it grows.
And what are your plans for signage there? I mean, it is a residential area. How are you planning on advertising with signage on your business?
There, because this used to be a former business. It does have a sign, this posting on the front of the property. So there will be a posting up there where it says the business name on it. So people are able to see it because that'll be the front entrance of the cafe. I also have Facebook that I'll be marketing out of there. And I would have a Google page that I would also be marketing out of there. And I would have vendors that will be knocking on doors and advertising.
Thank you.
What are your planned hours?
My planned hours, I want to start at six AM in the morning, all the way to eight thirty PM.
In the front facade, are you putting in new windows so it looks like a cafe? What work are you planning for?
I'm planning to, the inside, the interior work, I'm planning to renovate windows. I, I need to put in a cash, the cash register, tables. What else?
I was thinking the outside, I mean, the steps are broken up, you need.
That would be, that would get redone before that cafe would open. That, that's going to get removed and it's going to be made in, in a wood, like a wood type porch deal.
Need handicap accessibility for people to get in without steps.
If it needs handicap accessibility, I do have another door. This property has a total of three doors and another door could be installed for handicap accessibility. Instead of them coming up this way, because there's no way of, there's no way I, I'm able to build a ramp for a handicap, I could put in the side door, a ramp for handicap accessibility. So they're able to get in the restaurant or in the cafe.
Okay, you haven't done any drawings or schematics of anything of this nature yet then, right?
I have talked to a contractor so they could come in and do measurements to start the construction. I just got an estimate, they're just waiting to hear before they start work. They're just waiting to hear what the board, what the board says. But I have a contractor that is going to come in and do the renovations depending on your guys' decision.
Okay.
Other questions? I have a question for Mr. Scalise. Since this property had been used as a commercial entity a number of years ago, I take it at that time, there was a variance that had been approved for that, is that correct?
That was long before my time with the city. I do remember it as a kid. My guess is it originally started off as a Monpa grocery years ago, which there were several on Newland at the time. But right now there, you know, the fact that they'd converted it to a family. So any grandfathering was lost in that process. So, I mean, there's no gray area, it's black and white as far as what is and isn't allowed at the present time.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none at this time, it's, it's an opportunity. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak about these variance requests, there are two, an area variance and a use variance for the property at nine forty-three Newland Avenue. Again, just to remind anyone that you have to identify yourself by name and home address and you have to limit your remarks to the variance request and the property and five minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to speak? If you could just raise your hand quickly before you do, that would help me. Anyone who wants to speak on this? Mr. Elliot Romondo, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Elliot Romondo. I am a resident of four zero three Margaret Street, Jamestown, New York. I'm also the corporation counsel for the city of Jamestown. I, I will add, I've been looking at pictures of the property already and looking at it, it does remind me, it looks more like a commercial area than a residential. You know, I just remember even when I was a child on the north side, there were plenty of these types of businesses through residential districts and that's my comment there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak on this? Is there any correspondence?
I didn't have any requests from the public to join the meeting to come and speak, but I did receive one letter from a resident and I'll read that now. To Jennifer Williams and to whom it may concern, I am writing you this letter in regards to the petition of nine forty-three Newland Avenue. I, Sierra Beardsley and Barry Rexford owner are against the petitioner, Edgardo Lopez, opening up a small cafe bakery due to the following reasons. Depreciates the value of the house, privacy for my family and neighbors, increased traffic is unsafe for my three kids as well as all the other kids that walk by and play outside. Parking lot that's behind property is very close to my property line. We have three other small stores in the area. I do not see a benefit. No safety, no privacy if this is approved. I feel that I have lived here for three years and that I did not purchase the home to have a cafe next to it. I am strongly against petition. Please consider my concerns while making this decision. And it's signed Sierra Beardsley tenant and Barry Rexford owner. That was signed on June twenty ninth and they reside at one oh nine Sampson Street.
Thank you. At this time, we ask that the board have one more opportunity to ask questions or clarifications before we would be looking for a motion on the two variance requests. Are there other questions from members of the board?
Mr. Lopez, given the, the, the letter and the concern for safety for the children in that area and privacy, do you have any plans for any fencing or anything that might separate your parking lot from their backyard so children aren't able to run back and forth or?
Yes.
Help them?
In the next, I was actually planning to put a fence to, fence the property lines from my line to them. That was going to be done within the next three weeks. They were going to come and put in a fence. So there's going to be a wooden fence about six feet high that would separate the neighbor's property with mine. Same along with the rear side of the property, I'm doing a wooden fence that would separate. That one's going to be about eight feet tall because of the depths of the, the property line. So that's about eight feet tall and that's going to separate this property with the other side of the property on Newland. So that would all be fenced in before the cafe will get done. The cafe is not going to open right away. There is going to be renovations and upgrades to the property before I actually open it. The safety of the community, I understand that and it does come first. And that's why I said that if traffic does start up growing, that I would move. I'm not looking to stay here at a long-term basis, it's just as a startup.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Does that answer your question, Ms. Jones?
Does, thank you.
You're welcome.
And other questions?
Madam Chairman, just as for some clarification on my logic and what I'm thinking this afternoon, I would probably not vote in favor of a use, of a use variance for this property. One of the tests is for the applicant to show that he cannot get a, realize a reasonable return on the property as a two-family home. It's in an R two zone, zoned as a two-family. It appears that the upstairs is used as a rental unit. The downstairs is presently being used as an off, office. I guess that would probably be a non-compliant, non-compliant use. But certainly in our community and in a neighborhood, there's a demand for two, two-family homes. So just feel that the, that the petitioner has not demonstrated a, and the opportunity not to earn a reasonable return on that property and based on the traffic that he's suggested in the, that would be generated in the building and the parking, I think that it would have an adverse effect on the immediate neighborhood. Not so much on Newland Avenue, but, but certainly on, on Sampson Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorg. Are there other questions or clarifications from members of the board? Mr. Lopez, I did have one clarification that I think is necessary. When, when you apply for a variance for an area variance in particular, you need to, to let us know that you've looked at other places as possible places for your business and that this was the best and only location that you could have. Since it isn't a residential neighborhood versus a commercial neighborhood, did you look somewhere else to put your business? You talk about growing it and, you know, having it over time be in a bigger space. But did you look for any other spaces in the commercial zone?
Yes, ma'am. I have looked into two other spaces. The, what they wanted for, to rent it out or lease it out, I couldn't afford it just to start it off. So they wanted six to seven thousand dollars down and then two thousand, three thousand dollars a month. To, for me to start off, that kind, that type of money, I wouldn't be able to afford that because I also got to look into my other expenses as my insurances, my payrolls. So I have to consider all that before paying, you know, three thousand dollars a month. I'm, I got to make sure that I'm able to sustain the business.
And did you purchase that property with the intent to open a business there or did you?
Yes.
The property, okay.
When I, when the original property owner, Sal Armelli, we're, we're friends. When he sold me the property, I did talk to him about plans about opening a small cafe and he was all for it and he was supporting me. He said that that's how I knew that this business used to be a cafe. And before that, his former wife used to have it as an art gallery.
Unfortunately, it's one of these cases where Mr. Scalise came out earlier that if there had been a variance allowing a commercial entity in there, it had not been grandfathered in after it had been sold as just a two-family home. So that's the problem when, again, there's some misinformation sometimes when real estate is transferred. So that's why you'd have to come for a variance request because it's not now considered a commercial property. Any other clarifications from the board? Seeing none, it would be, at this point, I'd be looking for. We have to have a motion that includes both the request for a use variance and an area variance. Again, if you are not in favor of it, we still have to have a vote on this. So somebody needs to make a motion and second it. It does take four votes in the affirmative to get those variance requests approved. So I would be looking now for somebody on the board to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the use and area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Panabyanko. And is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion, Tim Smill.
Thank you very much, Tim. At this point, we have the motion on the floor to approve both the use and area variances for the property at nine forty-three Newland Avenue. And at this point, are there questions on the motion? Seeing none, I would ask that the clerk call the roll.
No.
Mr. Panabyanko?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Keme?
Very difficult to hear.
Apologies, I was unmute. I, I vote yes.
And Mr. Smill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chairwoman DiTanto?
No, there are enough votes for these two variances to be approved. The vote was four to three. Sorry, I had to check my reference. So, Mr. Lopez, those have been approved. It is imperative that you work with Mr. Scalise now and make sure that you get the proper approvals on your business plan and to go forward. So thank you very much for being with us today.
Thank you. I appreciate you all and thank you guys for your time.
Good luck. If you would please, Ms. Williams, read the next petition request.
Petition of Victor and Tori Nary, Two Spruce Street, Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero one, for an area variance to erect a six-foot tall fence in the front yard at Two Spruce Street on parcel three seven zero point one five dash six dash seven four, owned by Victor and Tori Nary in an R one zone. Section three hundred dash zero two zero six, fences and residential districts. The maximum fence height permitted is three point five feet, proposed as six feet.
Is a representative of the Narys here?
Yes, we're here.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Nary. At this point, again, would you state both your names and your home address? And then give us a little bit of information about your request, why the six-foot fence is needed and all of that.
Sure, I'm Victor Nary. This is Tori Nary. We live at Two Spruce Street in Jamestown. It's right on the corner of Lakeview. And, you know, currently we have a shared driveway with our neighbors on the Lakeview side. And on that shared driveway, there's some trees, some, some pine trees. I'm not sure the exact nature of them that run along the, the edge of the driveway. The prior owners, before we, we got to the house, let the trees become overgrown. And actually, one of the neighbors that shared the driveway before we moved in actually cut down a lot of the low-hanging branches on, on the trees. So basically it's shrubbery as like a privacy shrubbery, the, the trees are ruined. There's no really recovering them. So what we want to do is we want to replace those trees with the fence. And this fence, instead of stopping short of the end of the driveway, would, you know, approach the end of the driveway and then take a diagonal turn across kitty corner, across the, the corner between the driveway and the sidewalk to complete the, the look of giving us privacy in the, the completeness of the driveway instead of stopping short.
Thank you. Are there questions from members of the board?
I have a question. Looking at the drawing, I know on Spruce Street you have the hedge. So at the end of the hedge to the driveway, that's where you want to put a. So at the end of the hedge to the driveway, that's where you want to put a six-foot fence, six-foot tall?
Yes.
Yes, correct, right.
Up to the, we're leaving the the hedges.
Right.
The left of the hedges is about seventeen feet from there to the driveway. We would, we are requesting a privacy fence because it's essentially our backyard. I know it's in front, technically in front of the house, but we don't have a backyard. And that's where our-
Side yard, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because I did see where you have three and a half feet on the driveway side, they're dropping it down.
That was-
I I drew that because showing her where the fence, what heights were allowed. And then they were, they decided to try to come for the variance to see if they could get a full six foot versus the three and a half.
So even on the driveway side, you're talking six and a half?
Six.
Six foot?
Six foot, so it'd be six foot continuous down the length of the driveway, cut over to the front, to the to the Spruce Street side, and run over to the the hedges.
Okay, because I know the drawing did show three, you know, I was thinking three and a half feet.
Yeah, it was, it was confusing. I I did that to demonstrate where they, the allowable fence heights were.
Right.
And they decided to go forward with the fence. We did chamfer the corner back eight foot to allow visibility so as people walking on the sidewalk or in the vehicles have a better chance of seeing, you know, pedestrian traffic.
And the current, the entire space that we're requesting right now is covered by the trees. So there, you know, there is obviously the branches and the pines and everything that's, you know, blocking the view and creating the privacy as it exists today. So, you know, we we replacing kind of the trees that are there with the fence.
That's gonna be my question. You're taking on the trees then?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And those trees, they're like larger than six feet, would you say?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the ones on the driveway side, they're usually more like twenty, twenty-five feet. And the ones on the street side are probably like ten to twelve feet.
So you're going from like twenty-five feet to six, okay.
Other questions? Just a point of clarification for the Nerrys. The, you have a brick retaining wall, is that on the side where the shrubbery is now? Am I right?
Yes.
Right. The retaining, it 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 declines as you go towards the driveway. And each the driveway, it ends.
So it's six foot from the sidewalk or six foot above that retaining that you're gonna have the fence? I just want to make sure, what's the total height going to be?
It's gonna be-
Retaining wall.
Okay, so it's probably more like nine feet, would you say?
The, I'm sorry, the retaining wall ends where the where the front hedge stops.
Okay, okay.
There will be no retaining wall where the fence will start on Spruce Street.
Okay, so it'll just be six feet then in height?
Yeah.
Right. There's a little natural slope there behind the driveway, of course, but there's no retaining wall that we're gonna be putting the fence on top of. The fence will be a retaining wall.
And when you said the vinyl fence, I take it it's the typical white vinyl fence that you would be using in this instance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board?
I just have one question. It's, this property is in, on the zoning map, it shows that it's, has a historic overlay. Mr. Scalise, any concern with that? Probably not.
No, there shouldn't be the taller-than-allowable fences have been before the board. So, I mean, there was one further down on Lakeview in the overlay district as well, so. No, I mean, that doesn't really come into play. And the fact that this is on the spruce side versus the Lakeview side only, you know, is less less a detriment to the historic character of the house.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none at this time, it is time for the public to have an opportunity to speak either for or against the petition request for a variance to install a six-foot fence when three and a half feet is the normal and acceptable height. Is there anyone in the audience today that wishes to speak on this petition at Two Spruce Street? Seeing no one, I will move on and ask if there's any correspondence on this petition?
Did not receive any correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from members of the board before someone would put a motion on the floor? Seeing no questions, we'd be looking for a motion for an area variance at Two Spruce Street to erect a six-foot-tall fence in the front, what is considered the front yard on that property. And you have the drawing before you which shows where that fencing would be.
I make a motion that we approve the the variance for the Nerrys for for the fencing.
Thank you, Mr. Sorg. Is there a second to that motion?
Second to that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. There's a motion on the floor for approval of an area variance at Two Spruce Street. Any questions or clarifications from board members? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sorg?
Yes?
Mr. Panabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Keme?
Yes.
Mr. Smill?
Yes.
Chairwoman DiTanto?
Yes, that's been approved six to one. Please, again, make sure you work with Mr. Scalise to the Nerrys. And thank you very much for bringing their request, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Hey, we're ready to move on to the next request. If the clerk would please read that petition request.
John and Renee Hearn, 8 Westwood Drive, Jamestown, New York 14701. For an area variance to construct a new garage addition with a roughly five-foot minimum side yard setback at 8 Westwood Drive on parcel 404.05-1-26 and 404.05-1-27, owned by John and Renee Hearn in an R1 zone. Section 300-0305, R1 Single Family Residential District. Required front yard setback is 25 feet, proposed is five feet.
Thank you. Is there someone here representing the Hearn's? Oh, thank you. I see you waving. Okay. State your name and home address and tell us a little bit more about the reason for the petition request and the garage addition.
My name is Renee Hearn. I live at 8 Westwood Drive in Jamestown. The reason for my request is to build a garage. The garage building, we would like to keep in the architecture of a mid-century modern house. And there was a garage, briefly, that has been turned into a family room. So we would like to have a 26 by 26 garage put on the Westwood side, Westwood Drive side.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hearn. At this point, are there members of the board who have questions?
I I have a question. I I see that we own two adjoining, adjoining lots. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, have you looked at any other design alternatives so that you wouldn't have to have a need for an area variance so close to the road on Westwood Drive?
Um, I, to maintain part of the mid-century modern architecture, we had two plans developed. However, both plans would have needed variance approval.
Okay, with with that extra lot, would you have needed a variance if you were to put up a detached garage on that ex, on that extra lot?
That extra lot is where the garage is going.
Okay, the the attached garage is. But if you had placed a detached garage further back on the lot, would you have needed an area variance? And any of the designs or your architects looking at this project?
Um, we were hoping, we were hoping for an attached garage. The, um, my, my husband has difficulty walking and talking and he now uses a walker and he may need to use a wheelchair sometime in the future. So a detached garage wouldn't be really beneficial for the for for a wheelchair, being wheelchair accessible. And what we, and what we would have to do is leave our front, the front of our house faces Park Lane, even though our mailing address is 8 Westwood. And we would have to leave the front of the house to go around to the back or to go around to the Westwood Side Drive.
So I guess my concerns, I guess, would be twofold here. One is whether or not you'd have an alternative available to you in putting a garage on the property. And I guess, looking at it, the answer to that would be yes, but for convenience and for your your husband, it's more convenient to have a, an attached garage. I guess the second thing I would be concerned about would be whether or not there would be any type of a negative impact on the immediate neighborhood. It's a beautiful setting in the Westwood, the Westwood area. And having an attached garage so close to the road, I I'm concerned about the aesthetics and how they would, how they would play in that, in that setting. Those would be my two, my two major concerns.
I understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Sorg. Are there other members of the board who have questions? Seeing none at this time, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience today who would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the petition request for a garage addition at 8 Westwood Drive. Is there anyone in the audience, if you would wave, if you are wanting to speak on this petition? Seeing none, at this time, I I would close that portion and ask again the clerk if there's any correspondence on this particular request. And if so, would you please read it?
It have some email correspondence. It reads, "I find it difficult to comment on the request without understanding exactly what is being proposed. It appears that the Hearn's are proposing building a garage that will only be five feet from the front property line. I have concerns about the impact of the new addition on sightlines for vehicles traveling on Westwood Drive. However, I understand the proposed construction is on the Westwood Drive side of the property and not on the Park Lane side of the property. If that is true, then I have no objection to the request." And that came from Tom Pope. Well, when I had received that email, I met with Larry and we sent him, he suggested I send him the drawings of the actual placement of the garage. So after he received that email, he wrote back and said, "Thank you for the drawings. They were a great help in visualizing the planned addition. I believe that placing a permanent structure that close to the road will have a negative impact on general visibility along the road. However, because I do not live on Westwood Drive, it really doesn't impact me and I have no objections to the project. Thanks, Tom Pope."
Thank you. Are there other questions from members of the board on this particular request?
I should have commented. I generally like to make comments because it's kind of awkward when we vote and like no one expresses why they voted one way or the other. But to me, looking at these pictures, it it seems to me like, you know, I question how on earth it could be detrimental to the neighborhood. It doesn't seem as though it would be a hindrance to any vehicle traffic at all. And to be quite honest, it looks pretty, pretty nice, the garage, how they, how they have it. So to me, it would only increase the value of that home and the homes around it. So I'll be voting yes, and that's why.
Thank you, Mr. Panabianco. As you probably realize, this isn't a board where we're allowed just to have a lot of opinions. So I'm glad that you're able to express your, your opinion, but we have to be very cautious in terms of what we can put into the record.
Right. And and I guess, you know, with that in mind, when you're evaluating the area variance, variances, you're evaluating the impact on the neighborhood. To me, the really, the only impact to the neighborhood would be a positive impact, which is, that's what I'm basing my, my decision on, not the fact that I think the garage looks really nice, but rather the impact of the neighborhood, and I think it would be a positive impact.
Thank you. And and that is certainly one of the tenets of of approval for a variance request, that there isn't a negative impact on the neighborhood. I had one point of clarification for you, Mrs. Hearn. Would you then not use the parking spot on Park Lane? You would be moving your vehicles and parking in the garage and going off of Westwood, is that correct?
It's correct. If we get the variance approval and the garage is constructed, the driveway on Park Lane side would be regraded, top-soiled, and seeded for for grass.
Thank you. That that helps me in terms of understanding how that impacts the neighborhood. I appreciate that. Any other clarifications or questions? Seeing none then, we would be looking for a motion on the area variance request to construct the new garage, which is a 26 by 26-foot addition. And it has a yard setback of only five feet on the side yard. Again, we would be looking for someone to put a motion on the floor.
I just wanted to say, I know it's five foot, but it's a two-foot overhang also. So now you have a visi, visibility look of the character of the house three feet from the property line, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kenyon, for that clarification. Is there anyone who's willing to make a motion on this?
I moved to approve the area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Smill. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keme. We have a motion on the floor to approve the variance request for 8 Westwood Drive for the garage addition. At this point, if there's no questions on the motion, I will ask the clerk to pull the vote, for the vote.
Sorg?
No.
Mr. Panabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Keme?
Yes.
Mr. Smill?
Yes.
And Chairwoman DiTanto?
Yes, the motion has been approved five to two. Again, Mrs. Hearn, if you would make sure you work with Mr. Scalise to get everything in order in terms of paperwork and that you start your construction as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your time.
We are now ready to move on to our next petition. And I would have the clerk read that for us, please.
The petition of Stephen J. Recker, Von Scheniken King, Abbott Building, Suite 900, 200 Delaware Avenue, Buffalo, New York 14202. One regarding the number of proposed parking spaces and one regarding proposed automotive use setbacks on parcels 387.50-1-21, 22.1, 22.2, 23.1, 23.2, 25.1, 26.1, 27, 28, 54, 55, and 56 at 3153 and 55 Water Street, owned by Community Helping Hands in an M zone. Section 300-0506, parking spaces, 251 spaces are required, proposed is 148. Section 300-0502F3. In all M districts, all automotive use areas shall be set back at least five feet from all property lines, except that where a said area abuts any R district, it shall be set back at least 10 feet from all property lines. The proposed is 4.4 feet on the west property line.
Thank you. Just a reminder to the board, there are two area variances in this request. So when we are looking to vote, we would be voting on both of them. And if you chose to separate them, you'd have to do that at the time a motion is made. This is a complex project. We have a number of people here who are listening in on this. You, as board members, received some correspondence that came from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission voted in June to move forward with the site plan. This is a project that's been over two years in the making and has gone through a number of revisions. I was asked to go to a planning commission- I was asked to go to a uh, Planning Commission meeting in December, I believe, where this was discussed and some of the changes were brought about. Um, and there have been a number of revisions, including one, I think that's very important in terms of the remediation and the removal of some um, dilapidated housing, which will come as a result of some funding uh, for this particular project. Um, and I, I hope that as we move through this process, that you will again, look at the two requests for the variances, which are related to parking and setbacks, um, and that we can talk about those specifically. Uh, we can talk more generally about the value of this project, but we have to really uh, talk about those two variance requests specifically. So at this time, is there someone um, who would like to represent the petitioner and talk a little bit more about the need for the two variances?
Ye- yes, Madam Chair. My name is Steve Rikka. Uh, my name's on the application, but as I think you mentioned, uh, my client is Southern Tier Environments for Living. Uh, this is uh, an organization with a long track record of successful adaptive reuse of buildings, historic buildings and other buildings for the purpose of providing housing for the homeless and for folks who struggle from uh, in- income issues and, and other uh, other conditions that require services. Um, this project, as you stated, has been in development for about two and a half years. Um, we have had the privilege of working with a very dedicated staff in the Department of Development for the city of Jamestown. We've had numerous outreach meetings, discussions with uh, elected officials, members of the City Council, members of the Jamestown Planning Commission, Task Force members, uh, all working together to make the project uh, as good as, as it can be. Uh, one of the reasons that the parking is uh, deviates from the uh, requirement of the zoning code is because every project involves a trade-off. One of the key issues in the development of this project had to do with green space and uh, the Riverwalk and uh, playgrounds and the like. And so naturally, um, uh, in the context of that discussion, it was an acknowledgement that the, at least from the perspective of the Jamestown Planning Commission, it was more important to have uh, open space, green space, amenities uh, and playgrounds than it was to have excess paved surfaces, which uh, at least in the context of this project, uh, really is not something that was considered to be mutually beneficial. So as you know, um, the project has been the subject of an exceptional degree of scrutiny. The seeker process has been uh, extensive and laborious. The Jamestown Planning Commission established itself as lead agency and rendered a, a negative declaration on June twenty-third, which is uh, a determination that the project will not have a significant impact on the environment. In fact, uh, the Planning Commission in voting to approve this project uh, concluded quite the opposite. Uh, this is a project, as uh, Chairperson DiTanto noted, that will result in a remediation of the site as well as the uh, addressing uh, substandard housing units off-site. So it's, it's sort of a two-for-one. Uh, there are many, many benefits that um, I could discuss with you at length, but I'm sure that um, we all want to focus on what the two decisions are i- in this particular application, the two area variances. Um, the, in, in addition to the Jamestown Planning Commission adopting a seeker negative declaration, in addition to uh, voting to approve the site plan, the Planning Commission also voted separately to recommend that this body approve the variances uh, for the, some of the reasons that I'm going to outline. Um, a- as you know, when considering area variances, we look at the criteria of eleven oh seven A in the zoning code. And in my letter to you dated February fifth, I have a discussion of each and every one of those criteria that I hope uh, uh, demonstrates that we are entitled to uh, variances. With respect to whether there's an, would be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, this is an adaptive reuse of an industrial property in the manufacturing district. We are greening the site and significantly reducing the impervious surfaces there. Um, we are also reducing the degree of existing non-conformity with respect to those, the, the setback part of our variance uh, application. That, that's the requirement to maintain at least five feet of, on the edge of automotive use areas, i.e. parking areas. That, we are taking a site that was already non-compliant and um, improving it somewhat. Um, the, another criteria, as you know, is whether the project will present a detriment to nearby properties. Um, in addition to the fact that we're removing environmental contamination from the site and adding significant green space, um, we're also restoring an important local historical resource. As a result of the efforts of Southern Tier Environments for Living, the site is now eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, and the project will result in a restoration of the site rather than a situation where it falls into disrepair and uh, you know, possibly needs to be demolished at some point in the future. Um, a- another criteria in the zoning code is whether the benefit can be achieved uh, uh, by feasible means other than the area variance. The, the site selection process for a complicated uh, undertaking like this is incredibly uh, difficult and complex. And uh, the, the fact that we have succeeded in putting together the public financing and succeeded in uh, uh, working collaboratively with the pla- with the Planning Commission to get a site plan approval, I think is a good indication that um, the, the process of selecting a site that balanced all of the competing interests to the maximum extent was the case here. Um, we, in the process of accommodating concerns for additional green space, uh, Southern Tier Environments for Living and Community Helping Hands acquired the right to acquire additional property. So it, it really was a, a very carefully thought out and collaborative process to, to bring us to this point. So I would say there is not a feasible alternative method, uh, given the fact that there was a trade-off uh, between things like parking, green space, and so on. Um, uh, the fourth criteria is whether the requested area variance is excessive. I would submit that the setbacks aren't excessive because we are improving uh, conformity. The, the parking, I, I guess if you just look at the numbers, it looks like a big variance. It looks like, well, wait a second, you know, the, the code requires um, two hundred and fifty-one spaces and we are proposing one hundred and forty-eight. Uh, this is a situation where the code and a strict application of it, it just didn't necessarily account for this type of a project. A project where at least half of the tenants are, are unlikely to have a single vehicle and other uh, residents of this facility based upon similar projects uh, built and operated by Stell would have fewer than one car per two households. So w- we think these numbers are very realistic uh, and that the resulting surplus of thirty-five parking spaces is reasonable and appropriate, given all of the conditions, and that therefore this is not an excessive uh, variance. The, finally, the, whether the, whether the granting of the variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, I've already, I think, addressed that point. It's, it's an environmental cleanup, it's a greening of a site. Uh, so we think that that's a, a clear um, and obvious benefit. I misspoke. There's one last criteria, as you know, whether the difficulty was self-created. This is a, technically a self-created um, hardship, but we, we think that because that particular criterion doesn't dictate the result, you, you, it's a balancing of all of these factors. We think on balance that um, we have done uh, the best we can to meet all of these um, area variance criteria and that we would respectfully request that you uh, grant them for all of the reasons set forth in our application.
Thank you very much for that overview uh, and uh, being responsive to all of the reasons why a variance request is necessary in these two cases. Uh, now is time for questions from the board. Please let me know, is there anyone who would like to have questions?
I do. I ha- I have a couple of, couple of questions. Uh, the occupants of the, of the building when, when this is all done, and it is really, it's a very exciting, exciting project, project, I feel. A hundred and ten apartments consisting of, I think the newspaper said two, three, and four bedrooms, but I, I can't imagine that there wouldn't be one-bedroom apartments. Are there one-bedroom apartments in this?
Yes, there are. There will be studio apartments. Uh, Steve Ald uh, can comment on that.
Yeah, okay. So the occupants is, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. Yes, um, I, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but the majority.
Could you please identify yourself? I'm sorry, just for the record, name and address first.
Oh, sure. Uh, my name is Stephen Ald, uh, Southern Tier Environments for Living. Uh, my home address is eight zero three six Dennis Road, Angola, New York. Um, so uh, the vast majority of the apartments are one-bedroom apartments, uh, because of special needs population, which is uh, fifty-six out of the hundred and ten units. They um, typically need one-bedroom apartments. So um, we, we typically build more one-bedroom apartments than any other kind. I think um, I want to say there's like around twenty uh, apartments that are not one-bedroom apartments. I, that's just off the top of my head, I can't remember.
If I can interject, I've got the numbers in front of me now, if I may. We are going to have four studios, seventy-one one-bedrooms, twenty-one two-bedrooms, and fourteen three-bedrooms.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. So I guess the, the occupants of this bill, this building, as I, as I see it right now, would be a hundred and ten apartments, uh, Community Helping Hands, uh, the current owner of the property, they would, they would be occupying a portion of the building. Uh, Saint Susan's, they would, they would be occupying it and the Mental Health um, uh, Association. Are there any other prospective tenants? Or is there any other additional space that could be occupied that would require more parking in addition to your projected needs of a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and thirteen spaces?
There is a, a chart uh, set forth in our application that has uh, the, the planned uses in the left-hand column. Uh, a hundred and ten residential units. I, I think all of the, the tenants that you listed, Mr. Sorg, uh, capture what we have planned. I don't know if Steve Ald, uh, Southern Tears, um, uh, Chief Executive Officer has anything to add to that, or, or Katie Castro of Community Helping Hands?
Yes. Hi, my name is Katie Castro and I am the Board Chair at Community Helping Hands. My address is three three one nine Driftwood Road in Bemis Point. And to answer your question, Mr. Sorg, um, there is some additional space that will be available on the first floor of the building in the same, um, in the same floor that Community Helping Hands, Saint Susan's, and MHA will be located and that will be available for lease, that we will be looking for like-minded partners to go in. So specifically for nonprofit partners that may be able to provide services that are needed um, from the residents. For example, something to the effect of a market that would first, provide fresh foods for the residents who live in the building.
So will your proposed number of parking spaces of a hundred and four, a hundred and forty-eight, would that accommodate parking necessary for that additional unused space that could be developed into uh, complementary businesses to support um, the current businesses and future businesses there?
I believe so, Mr. Sorg, because on an average day, we have Community Helping Hands, Saint Susan's, and MHA that are already full operational in that building right now. And on an average day, there's no more than three to four park, cars in that parking lot, because most of our clients that come to our not-for-profits do not have transportation. So based on the current, um, our current population of clients, I would say that it's, it's accurate.
And looking at your site plan, it appears that you probably have options on fifty-three and fifty-five Water Street, uh, the, the, the houses uh, that would have butt up to your property going, going eastward, the uh, UPMC building?
Yes, uh, we, we have options on those properties. The intent is uh, to demolish those uh, two houses and that will become uh, green space and uh, playground and uh, some additional parking.
Very thanks for answering those questions, I appreciate. Now, the setback requirement on the, on the west side of the property, if I can just turn to that to see if I, I, I have my compass right. We're talking about the uh, uh, a very area variance where the medical office building is on that, that side, is that, that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And we're looking at, at a var- variance of four, i- it's a four, four feet within the uh, property line and typically we require ten, ten feet, so we're looking at a relatively insignificant um, variance for that west property line.
I would agree with that.
Is that true? Is that so? Is that true? Okay. In the back, it looks like on the north side and on the east side, the east side, we have the Chatacoin River. And how will you develop that, just curi- curiously? Um, it looks like there's a walkway on the north side of the, of the property?
Yes, and the, and the Planning Commission, as part of the site plan approval, uh, appreciated the uh, pedestrian amenities that will be added. We're fully aware of the uh, the great uh, Chatacoin Riverwalk that is uh, being established along the river. And this will complement that and, and hopefully others will follow suit and link up to cover the whole river eventually.
Okay. All right. And kind of going off on a tangent, it's not part of our two variance request, but this is, this is going to be a taxable uh, entity, is, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Am I understanding, reading the newspapers? Yep.
Yep. We're protecting eighty-five thousand annually in real property taxes, where currently there isn't zero.
Great. And the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I've been told has been earmarked for demolition of dilapidated, substandard properties in, in the community. How, how will that, how will that be spent? How do those properties get, get targeted? There's an abandoned uh, condemned home on Water Street across, just across and down, down the, down the street. Uh, would that be one of the, one of the properties that you earmark for, for demolition uh, to improve the character of that neighborhood, considering you, you're putting in a thirty million dollar plus investment in this property?
The, the site plan approval and the mitigation agreement uh, that was presented with it, contemplate that Southern Tier Environments for Living will collaborate with the City of Jamestown Department of Development and the Chautauqua County Land Bank to target lists of properties that um, uh, would be considered to be substandard housing uh, and the abatement of which would be beneficial to the city's long-range uh, revitalization efforts. So the answer to your question, I guess, is maybe. I don't know if uh, Crystal Certic has any thoughts on that, but I, I don't, we, we, we do not have a list that's carved in stone and we certainly are here to do whatever we can to facilitate whatever the priorities of the city of Jamestown are.
And he, I heard mentioned earlier in a dialogue that there was um, public funding involved. Um, has all the funding been, been arranged for this? Uh, investors, public, public funding, any other necessary funding? Does it look like that's been um, been, been put in place?
The, I, I would ask Steve Ald to discuss that. He's closest to those issues.
Okay.
Um, we uh, have been set for uh, closing with the state funding agency, uh, New York State Housing Finance Agency uh, in October of this year. Um, unfortunately, with the advent of the global pandemic, um, banks now are, are hesitant uh, to move forward on anything. Um, they've paused uh, their investments. We, we hope that they will unpause in time for us to still maintain our closing date in October. Uh, but right as of now, banks are um, pretty frozen up in, in not investing, uh, not making investment decisions. Prior to COVID, we had very strong interest uh, from uh, Citibank. It was uh, that ultimately we believe will uh, be the investor in this project. But as of right now, they're uh, pausing all such decisions.
I understand. Well, I wish you good luck with, with that.
Thank you.
Are there other questions related to the variance requests on this uh, group of properties on Water Street? Any other questions from members of the board? Okay, um, at this point then, it's time for members of the public to have an opportunity to speak on the petition requests. Uh, again, if you are a member of the public, you need to identify yourself by your name and your home address. Limit your remarks to five minutes or less. Uh, and please address the variance requests. Uh, this isn't a time just to make a comment on the project. This isn't a time just to make a comment on the project, but to specifically talk about the impact of the variance requests. If you are somebody who would like to speak, please either raise your hand or somehow identify yourself so I can see, because not everybody has their video on. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? One more opportunity. Seeing none, then we'll close the public comment. At this time, we ask if there's any correspondence on this petition request. Clerk, is there anything that we need to read into the record?
I did receive one letter in the mail. It should be noted, there was no return address on the envelope. Whoever wrote the letter did not supply their name or address or signature, so I'll, I'll, I'll read what they've written. City of Jamestown Board of Appeals, I have been informed that there is a hearing regarding the zoning board and parking spaces on Water Street. I feel that this development will not be a benefit in our community. This will not create jobs in our struggling economy by bringing mentally ill and people with criminal backgrounds into our area. Our town needs jobs for the economy, not more housing for low income. I also foresee crime increase. Also concern about the lack of grocery stores nearby, also for the people they will serve. I don't feel this is the right setting for this endeavor. And that's, that's all they wrote.
Thank you. Normally, we, of course, we ask people to sign and identify themselves when they have something to say. And obviously, some of that information is misinformation. The project has been changed. The project originally was going to include some diversion programs for those who were coming out of the county jail, and that has been taken out of the project. And I think that has been identified publicly that the project was changed. The question of the food desert is certainly a fair one, and I think Ms. Castro mentioned that there's some opportunities now that there may be a market that could be put in place. We also approved a few months ago a dollar store that's not too far away from there, so there would be other opportunities for people eventually to get some food. And there's mobile, there's a possibility of the mobile market. Certainly, food trucks is something that we're talking about, so there's opportunities, I think, there. In terms of the, the actual layout of the, of the parking places, I do have a question. I asked this, I think, at the Planning Commission. I want to ask it again. Since many of those residents will not have private vehicles, is there enough space to have a carts bus or a small 18 to 24-seat bus get into that driveway and successfully negotiate through there? And I don't know who needs to answer that.
I, I can answer that. We, we have, through consultation with the school district, I, I know you're, you're asking about carts, but in collaboration with Greenman and Peterson, our engineers, and in discussions with the school district, it was confirmed that there's enough room to turn around a school bus. So I, I don't know if anyone has looked at the specific issue of a carts vehicle. Steve Ald may have something, or Katie may have something to say about that, but I think there's no question that there's sufficient room for vehicles to enter the property and turn around, if in fact that sort of arrangement is necessary.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or clarifications from members of the board? Seeing none, then I would be looking for a motion. Again, there are two area variances for this, for both the setback, in terms of the setback from the edges of the property, not being in conformance with the current zoning code, and also for a fewer number of parking spaces than is recommended. And I think we've talked about the fact that not everyone that's going to be living in there or working there may have private vehicles, so that doesn't seem like the number is that far out of what we would consider alignment for that project. We also do have something that I should ask Ms. Williams to talk about. The recommendation from the Planning Commission, there was a letter from the Planning Chair that was distributed to all of the zoning board members indicating a hope that these both would be approved as part of the project and that their approval of the site plan was based on approval of these two variance requests. And we'll put that into the record. I don't think we need to read it into the record, but we will add that to the, to the record for today. Is there anyone willing to make a motion?
I make a motion. Approve the petitioner's request for the two, two area variances pertaining to the, the parking and the setback on the west side of the property.
Is there a second to the motion for approval of both of those variances? Thank you, Mr. Kenyon. Any questions, clarifications needed on the motion? Seeing none, I would have the clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Sorg?
Yes.
Yes.
Who?
Mr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Kame?
Yes.
Mr. Smeele?
Yes.
Chairwoman Di Tonto?
Hi, the vote is seven to nothing. That is for both variance requests to be approved. We appreciate your work on the project, Mr. Ricky, and certainly Mr. Ald and all the others. Thank you for being here. We, we look forward to seeing this project through fruition, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
End of the agenda, so I am going to dismiss the meeting. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, everyone.